...asking you questions in an atmosphere of respect and civil discourse. The League of Women Voters of Menhasset is nonpartisan. What does that mean? It means that we never support or oppose any political party or candidate. Our mission is to engage you, the voters, by giving all candidates who are given office a public face to answer your questions in a structured way while maintaining civil discourse. We often describe our mission as making democracy work. This includes our voter services work, letting candidates speak directly to voters on issues that matter through forums like this, through a variety of publications, and also in holding our voter outreach programs. It includes educating voters and advocating with legislators involving voting in an election, but also on redistricting, natural resources, and healthcare. We only take decisions after studying them extensively. We hope you will consider joining our league. And as you know, the League of Women Voters of Port Washington does have a website, L W V of P W M dot org. And remember, the league is not for women alone. I will now turn over the candidate forum to Katie Henley, who will serve as our moderator for this evening. Katie is not from Menhasset and therefore is not eligible to vote in the election as our rules require. She will now read the rules and procedures, and then we will move on to opening statements and questions from the audience.
I'd like to invite the candidates to the conference. While the candidates are taking their places, I'd like to take this opportunity before now to point out the emergency exits. I see two. Something over here?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm glad I'm in the back, because that's the closest one to you. Okay. As Regina said, my name is Katie Henley, and I am from Port Washington. I am not a voter in the Menhasset School District as our rules require. Tonight, Marie Della will be our timer, and Judy Estherquist is managing our tech that is recording this to be posted later. The recording will be posted within forty-eight hours visually on our YouTube channel. For over a century, the League of Women Voters has sought to make democracy work by holding events like this so that voters like you can hear the views and the total behavior of candidates on a range of issues relevant to the campaign. We ensure that all candidates agree to debate procedures. Further, by meeting here tonight, you as the audience have also agreed, as noted on the large posters as you enter. The League has used procedures like these for more than sixty years to ensure fair process and encourage civil discourse. I will now read those rules out to you. It will take about three minutes, so please bear with me. The moderator will be a member of the League of Women Voters. She comes out of the district. Candidates' opening statements will be determined by drawing lots before in-person events. That's how we're... That's what we've already done. The same order will be for opening and closing statements. Each candidate will be allowed three minutes for an opening statement. And after all the candidates have stroked in, I'll open the meeting with questions. Questions could have been submitted beforehand electronically. I don't believe we had any of those, so priority will be given to questions asked at the microphone. I ask that you line up calmly and quietly at the mic. In all cases, the moderator will be the final arbiter of whether questions should be answered. Questions must not be duplicative, personal, or abusive. Questions at the microphone will be strictly limited to less than one minute. Each candidate will be given ninety seconds to answer each question at the moderator's discretion. The time for response may be reduced so long as it is the same for everyone. There will be no redoubles. Questions may be addressed to a specific candidate or to the candidates in general, although all candidates will be given an opportunity to answer any question addressed to a specific individual. The moderator will attempt to rotate the order of responses for each question. A lead member will act as timekeeper. At one half-minute command of any given time period, the timekeeper will alert the speaker by a prearranged signal. Marie is demonstrating the prearranged signals. Candidates who ignore time signals may have their speaking time reduced, and/or those not violating the rules may be given extra time. Candidates will have two minutes for a closing statement. Since the purpose of the meeting is to determine the candidates' views, no substitute for the physical presence of a candidate at in-person events will be allowed should a candidate be unable to attempt. No written or recorded statement may be provided in lieu of active participation by a candidate. Forums require two or more candidates for each seat to be present. The use of prompts, charts, or visuals, and the display of campaign collateral or apparel is prohibited. The importance will be policy, audio, or video recording by authorized members of the media will be permitted only if all the candidates present agree. The League maintains the right to record the forum, as we're doing, and publish it on the League of Women Voters-controlled electronic pages. No other recording will be allowed. No partial transcripts or recording may be published without written permission from the League. And as I said, all the candidates have signed their agreement to those procedures. Now, I'd like to explain what we expect from you, the audience. Like you, we in the League are here tonight because we believe that citizenship requires both voter education and civic engagement, and the responsibility for maintaining good government rests on the shoulders of you, the voters. These are our expectations for you. Please be sure your cellphones are turned off or silenced. Please do not block the doors or the camera. Our purpose is to hear from the candidates, so let's focus on their voices, not yours. Please remain seated and silent during the questions and answers unless you are moving to or from the microphone. As moderator, I will stop the debate if the audience interrupts. Interruptions reduce the time for candidates to speak, and we're all here to listen to them. To repeat, League policy permits only authorized recordings of this forum. Taking clips or segments is not authorized. The League is recording this forum, and we will post it on our L W V of P W M YouTube channel this week before the election. Any audience member who violates the agreed procedures for the forum or disrupts the forum by ignoring these audience expectations after being warned may be asked to leave. Are we all comfortable with that?
Yes.
Thank you. When the candidates arrive and who lost their speaking order, let's see. Ms. Desiree Woodson will be first for opening remarks and closing. Ms. Nadia Genopoulos will be going second for opening remarks and closing, and will be the first candidate to respond to the first question. And Ms. O'Brien-Silva will be going third for opening remarks and closing. So I'll now ask for those remarks, and I'll ask the audience to applaud briefly after each candidate's opening statement, and then to hold all applause and other responses until after the closing statements. Because I'd love to see if I missed anything. All right, Ms. Woodson, please.
Sure. Can everyone hear me?
Yeah, they probably want to put...
If it's green, it's live.
Thank you. It's live. Can everyone hear me now? How's everyone doing?
Good.
Okay. Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Desiree Woodson, and I am running for the Menhasset Board of Education because I believe every child deserves a voice, every family deserves a fair value, and every school should be a place where students can thrive. As a lifelong Menhasset resident, a proud graduate of the Menhasset High School, and a mother of a special needs child currently enrolled in the district, I understand firsthand the challenges many families face in navigating the school system. For over thirty years, I have been a committed community advocate, serving as the chairwoman of the Menhasset Great Neck E O C, a commissioner with the town of Northland says housing authority, and a leader, the vice president of the North Shore chapter of the N double A C P. Through my work, I have witnessed the gaps in communication, equity, and access to resources that exist within our schools. I am running to bridge these gaps and to ensure that every student, regardless of their background, abilities, and socioeconomic status, receives the support they need to succeed. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nadia Genopoulos. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting today's forum. I would also like to thank my fellow candidates for their interest and willingness to campaign and dedicate their time to volunteer as members of the Board of Ed. I am running for reelection for one of two trustee seats. My family and I have lived in Menhasset for nine years. I am the parent of two children, one in the middle school and one at the high school. Prior to my service on the board, I served as a monthly club scout dem leader and a girl scout leader, as well as a Menhasset Girl Scout servicing a treasurer, in which I still hold that position. Professionally, I service as administrator for a statewide special education program based in New York City. I have served in this role for seventeen years, and it is a profession that I love. I love working with parents, and that's where I could sympathize closely, working with parents. So I admire what you have gone through. I help them also navigate through the system, which is very intricate. I received my bachelor's in speech-language pathology and audiology from C W Post. Actually, back then, I'm still C W Post. That's a long ago. Now it's L I U Post. I hold two graduate degrees, a dual degree in general and special education, and a second in school administration from St. John's University and Tora College. I hold a New York State certifications in all of these areas. I later pursued my doctorate in organizational leadership from Vanderbilt University. During this tenure, I took on a passion project with the peer. We studied the veteran transition and the many intricacies that veterans go through. We analyzed how we could use veteran talent to fill labor shortages. It was such an honor and privilege working with the U.S. military, the governor's office of Tennessee, and the Honor Foundation, a special forces... It's an organization that works with the special forces to translate their skills into career-ready skills to fill labor shortages. I was invited to Washington, D.C. to deliver a TED Talk in bringing awareness to this issue, and I'm super proud of this work. I am an educator by training, which is why serving on the boards is a genuine interest and passion in keeping the needs of our students and teachers as a main priority. It has been an humbling experience being able to utilize my education and work experience within this role. Having had the opportunity to build relationships and be of value to neighbors has been a privilege.
Okay, Ms. O'Brien-Silva?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for organizing this forum, and thank you to everyone joining in person and online. My name is Allison O'Brien-Silva. My husband and I have three daughters in ninth and seventh at the secondary school and third grade at Montezale. We moved here in 2014, and we are grateful for the eleven years we've had so far of making core memories with all of you and your kids. Menhasset is a special place because so many of you give back. I found opportunities to contribute as well, mostly tied to my daughter's interests, including through Girl Scouts and Backstage, the booster club for theater parents. Our schools consistently rank among the best in the nation, and that's no easy task. I am running for the board because as I look ahead to what the future may demand of the young adults our children will become, I want to help our schools deliver not only the best public education possible, but also redefine and celebrate what success is for each student. I want us to overachieve and innovate in support for all, from special needs students to those tackling those EPs, in a way that helps each unique child achieve great things while also supporting their well-being and their mental health. I believe that my professional experience has prepared me well for this role. After college at the University of Pennsylvania, I worked in Washington, D.C., first in government affairs, then in marketing at a national institution. I moved back to New York for my MBA at Columbia, and then joined McKinsey, where we were held to the highest professional standards in our work. And at McKinsey, we focused as much on collaborating and communicating with clients as we did with running analyses and doing our research. If elected, I will serve with a spirit of openness and consensus building. When decisions need to be made, I will do my homework to build a deep understanding of the issues and will be a constructive collaborator. Over the course of this campaign, I've had the privilege of connecting with many of you in all parts of our community. My conversations with all five current board members and several former members, as well as members of CASA, PACE, the SCA, MAC, cultural affinity groups, and groups representing young families have informed my priorities if elected. I will prioritize a rigorous fiscal oversight, excellence in education at all levels, proactive communication with families, a focus on students' mental health, and recruiting, retaining, and empowering our talented teachers and staff. A few concrete ideas include taking a hard look at research on learning via Chromebook screen versus paper in textbook, adding advanced classes for the humanities in middle school, providing more support to preschool families seeking special education services, maintaining small class sizes, paying extra attention to kids who fall in the middle, and engaging families earlier on in the college process to manage stress. I have the relevant professional experience, a passion for our kids, and I'm ready to dedicate myself to this role. I want to help make our schools the best they can be for all of our students, and I ask for your vote to elect me to the Menhasset School Board this Tuesday.
Thank you very much. Thank all of you. We're ready to begin with questions, so if anyone has a question they want to ask the candidates, please come up to the microphone. They will have one minute to... Say your question. Don't be shy.
Good evening, everyone. Hello.
Hi.
Okay, so as a parent of Menhasset School District, I have children that are in special education, and I've gone through some highs and lows. I tell you, it's a challenge when you're not well-versed with how to go through the navigation of special education. So with that being said, I'm curious to know individually, you know, how would you deal with someone that's not versed in knowing what the different process is, who to connect with, whose advocacy that, you know, you can connect with? So you are well aware of what to do in situations where your children may not be getting what they, you know, they need. For example, if there's a sixty-day turnaround that your child is supposed to have an assessment, and it's not done, and it goes over that, what do you do? You know, and I'm speaking from a real place in what I'm saying because I had to learn the ropes going through it, not already being equipped prior to going through it. So that was very important for me.
So first of all, are we... Oh, I did it. Yes, so this question, Ms. Genopoulos, will go first? Okay. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm very sorry to hear that, the fact that it went over the sixty days. So the approach to this question and my response to this question, what I wish I could tell you, is what I would do if I was, had the capacity in my role, and if I wasn't a Board of Ed trustee and I was just a parent advocate, would be a different response than what I'm able to give you as a Board of Ed trustee. So as a parent advocate, it would be a completely different response, and it would be a step-by-step process. But as my role as a Board of Ed trustee, it would be alarming to hear that it did step over the sixty-day mark, but unfortunately, it's out of my capacity to be able to go to the person that's in charge of that. My role is more governance. So in my capacity, it would be to check in with the CEO, essentially, Dr. Passy, and share with him that on a departmental level, and it could have been an honest mistake on oversight, but he would know that this is a pattern, and to check in with him, and then he goes through his chain of command, and then I would share also with the other board members, because maybe they're getting feedback from the community as well. And this is something that we need to check in, check in with Dr. Passy about, and add it to our executive session, because this is not public, something that would get added to public agenda items, because this pertains to children and their records. And this is something very important for all of us as a board to be monitoring, because children are, if they're not receiving their services, each day matters. It starts developmental milestones. So this is something that we would monitor, and then obviously, if it's a pattern, there are different steps that would have to be taken in order to follow this. So from a board lens, that's the active role that we would be able to take, of course, different than what a parent advocate or somebody that's a principal or a superintendent response that I would be able to give you.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna give the other candidates two minutes each.
Okay, thank you.
So, Ms. O'Brien-Silva, what was your name again?
My name is Jeri Rose.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
My mom is a retired special education teacher. She spent most of her career in elementary schools. And I remember growing up and hearing stories she was in inclusion classes and self-contained classes. I remember the language she would use and talk about, and there were times when she wanted to take some of the kids home and keep them and help them and work with them. So I am familiar from my personal experiences as a child and a special ed teacher here from that end, and I know how much special ed teachers love your kids. I think for your question, I would first turn, in the conversation that I had with some of the folks involved in PACE, what they raised with me, and I don't know if you felt this too, was that part of the, when the child is first identified as needing those services, usually even happens when they ever get into the district, and the family is experiencing anxiety and they're worried about their child. And I heard over and over again in my conversations that we need to master that moment of time and educate the families on what that process looks like. PACE on their website has a sobering list of acronyms of all of the tongues, and I'm sure you know a lot more of them than I do, what the special education families need to understand, and to sort of find a way with the school to hold the hands of those parents early on and get them fluent in the language and what this process is like. And then I think once that child gets into the system, I would want to make sure, if I was elected, that the folks who are putting in these roles, that were hiring these roles, are the top-notch and willing to fight for the kids who are coming through. The second thing I'd look at if a problem like that came up is to look right away at what went wrong and how can we fix the processes so that your child and any other child who's in that special education gets the attention that they need? Because each child in special education, as I remember from my mother, is so unique. There's not one commonality, and so many of the special ed kids, they come with varying needs, and I want to make sure there's a system in place to make sure that those people, that you don't fall through the cracks. So that's what I would hope to do. Thank you.
So I'm gonna speak to you because I'm not currently on the board as of yet, but as a parent who actually went through this same exact thing, which is part of the reason why I'm here today, it's totally, completely unacceptable that, you know, we as the Board of Education would take the position that, you know, that's not something that we talk about. It's just a human thing that also is not something. Maybe there's something that we can put in place that, you know, we're more approachable, and yes, that we pay superintendents and we have people in charge, but there is a chain of command that at least we're aware of the situation so that we can hold the people accountable. Ultimately, you know, the taxpayers pay the teachers and the superintendents to do and run the school the way that it's supposed to be run, and kids not receiving services, that's just dropping the ball. That's totally unacceptable. I understand that there is a chain of command, but my son and there are other children who we don't know about, and I'm not gonna name names, but are going through the same exact thing right now. So I would just say that we, as a school board, need to take a look at what is going on, how things are being handled, and make sure that things are being done.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Well, I just want to share this very important thing because everyone gets these wonderful titles and these positions to do things, and we all are championing in the beginning that this is what we're gonna do. We're gonna stick to our agendas, and we're gonna execute it one by one. But I'm speaking from a real place, as I mentioned. I had to fight the school board in getting the school board thirteen citations personally because every time, because I was a woman of color, they turned around and they tried to find flaws in my home, sending CPS, not a found a case, okay, because they couldn't figure out exactly what was going on with my children individually. So it didn't came...
Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt, but this is not a forum for personal stories?
No, I just...
As I'm necessary, yeah.
Okay.
And I wanna see if there's anyone else who is ready to question.
Sure, I just wanna finish this, but I'm just saying this is very important because everyone's in a role, but they don't know the stories from maybe myself as a minority. So I'm speaking to that part. All I'm saying is there are things that are happening that are not being heard, so it's wonderful that everyone's stating what they're gonna do, but please, I ask you to get some, reach out to some people, all different ethnicities, colors, I love everyone, and find out exactly what's going on, because a lot of voices are not being heard. So I just pray everyone does well, and thank you for hearing me out. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you.
I'll just sort of be saying that I grew up in Menhasset. I went to the Menhasset Public Schools. I lived in Smithtown, and I have a daughter who is now, she's now thirty-one, and she's a, she is a librarian. So my question to you is about book banning, and are there books in, currently in the Menhasset School District that are being banned? And what is your stance on book banning?
Great, thank you. So that will go first to Ms. O'Brien-Silva.
Thank you very much for that question. I think one of the reasons why Menhasset is such a highly ranked and competitive and successful district is because we do hire the best teachers, and we trust them with the most challenging and difficult material to teach those kids. And I think we're doing a disservice to our children if we take that away from them. I think teachers, the ones that we hire, that are the best that they can be, we can trust them to pick books that are age-appropriate and also challenging and inspiring to them and expose them to world and thoughts, you know, that they haven't, they might not have experienced before. I want our teachers to teach the kids how to think, not what to think, and when they go out in the world, they need those critical thinking skills and those perspectives from other views in life that's gonna get them far. If we shield them from that, like I said, we're doing them a great disservice.
Thank you very much. Ms. Woodson?
Just echoing Allison, I feel that everyone's history should be allowed to be heard and taught. We should not be selected, and that as long as it's curriculum and that the right group of people are placed together to go through these books and see what's going on, and as long as everyone is being represented, I don't see why it shouldn't issue.
Thank you. Ms. Genopoulos?
Our teachers are very talented in Menhasset, and they work actually, the structure that is set by the teachers and by the curriculum heads is that they work as a team, and they choose the books and the curriculum, and it's age-appropriate per grade, and they decide what is age-appropriate in expanding the children's thinking, and echoing the candidate's statements that it's age-appropriate per grade, and it also is documented. They submit it to their curriculum head, and they make the choices for the students and for what they believe is appropriate to expand their minds and their exploration and be worldly.
Okay, thank you. Do we have another question? Because I have a...
I do have one more. I know that in the last few years, when I, there was a big to-do about diversity, equity, and inclusion, and I guess the question is, is that still an issue? Is that something that people are looking at? You know, like, I'm just thinking of what's going on in the world around us in the United States. Are things, or, you know, I don't wanna say erasing history, but, you know, books that teach the true history of our country, of the world, is that still a thing?
Imagine I had to say that.
Can you, yeah, can you clarify a question a little bit?
I'm just wondering, and you probably don't have anything to do with this, but, you know, diversity, equity, and inclusion has become kind of a bad word in a lot of walks of life here, and I don't know if history books are being written now that are taking things... And I don't know if history books are being written now that are taking things out. You know, this is not a good question.
Are you asking, are you asking? If there's any changes to the curriculum?
It's a great question. Take it off.
If there are any changes to the curriculum in terms of what and how history is being taught?
Yeah, yeah, excellent.
Other than that, changes- And does the board have any, in particular, would ask the city board members, is the board being asked to or found the need to interface with the history department in terms of influencing the curriculum? So that first, that question would start. Ms. Woodson actually gets the first round of that one. So you wouldn't know about what actually is, but-
I wouldn't know about what actually is, but I would know what I actually lived through. As you all know, I'm a graduate of the class of 1993 at Menhasset High School. I came to Menhasset High School as a junior. There was no history being taught that represented me, right? So I know for a fact that, yeah, we talk about these things and we talk about what we teach in the schools. But to be honest, I wasn't taught that when I came to Menhasset. You know, there's a lot that could be said about it, but I'm not here to, to, I'm here to solve problems and work together and make change. But Menhasset doesn't teach much of history, of everyone's history. It's not really, you know, it's not for everyone. There's history, but not for everyone. Personally, that's my personal opinion that I lived through.
Okay, Ms. Janabus?
I could share directly that the board does not dive into the social studies or any direct curriculum with that department. What I can share with you is that Menhasset culture and our teachers overall are the most loving, it's the most loving environment. And my children, from a parental perspective, are so loving, so inclusive. And so many things they learn at home, but I could say they bring home so much from school. And I try to use so much that they bring home from school from the, and I, I can't speak to your ears. And obviously, that was a different point in time, but I could speak to today. And I can't define your question. But to me, D E I, the principles of D E I is, there's a span of it. And that is diversity and having diverse cultures. And Menhasset has many diverse cultures. I'm a first-generation American. And my, Menhasset has a Southeast Asian community, Asian. It's a diverse environment. And so that's just one example. Also, even what we were even talking about earlier, just children with special needs. And we have diversity as well. And then equity has, there are many stances of equities. Also, just giving somebody a step when they need a step, just to have that. And that could just even need just extra tutoring, that they need that extra push just to get to the grade level. And that's using the academic intervention services that we offer. And there's so many, there's so many things. So equity could mean that as well. And then for inclusion, I mean, that's embedded within all of our buildings. So, yeah, I'm at time, but I, it's within all of our buildings and our staff. I can't see Kylie have a better staff.
Great, thank you.
I appreciate that response.
Ms. O'Briance. All right, thank you. I heard two pieces of your question. So the first piece about our history and how we're taught it and how we learn it. I was a history major in college. So it's a topic really important to me. And I think we should never shy away from learning our history because it is filled with amazing successes. We landed on the moon. We invented democracy, what we've done. And there's also some challenges. And no one here today is responsible for those lessons. But we need to learn them and make sure as we go forward, we're not making those same mistakes again. My family, some of my family's here. Over our last trip, we visited Chez Sabat and Tolston and the history of the slave trade there. And we went to the museums. And we've learned that in school, of course. But to be there physically and to feel the generational trauma that those families have experienced and the legacy still lives on today is an important frame and lesson that everyone should feel and learn. So is it an uncomfortable topic? Absolutely. But if we don't learn that and experience it, you know, our future is not where we're going to want to get it. So I think your point about history, I am a firm believer of learning it all, the good, the bad, and the ugly. So we don't do it again. Your part about our community, I think, my family and I, we've been here 11 years. And in the course of those 11 years, we've seen this community change demographically in many ways. Our Asian-American community is growing, our Indian-American community is going. I think the school district is trying to find pathways to embrace that. And I think there's a lot, a lot more we can do. But we've added Diwali to the calendar, we've added Chinese New Year. My kids come home celebrating all of those holidays, Juneteenth. And they speak about it comfortably and normally as part of their, you know, community as well. Do I think we've made it? Absolutely not. I want to continue, you know, the work that we've been doing.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, do we have another question? And this question, I'm sorry, this question will go to Ms. Janabus first.
Hi, I'm a parent of sixth grader and kindergarten. So I'm community science trained. As far as, I'm very excited about nowadays, the advance of digital intelligence. And I'm kind of passionately teaching my kids coding and learning all these things. But I'm also seeing a lot of challenge that is potentially going to rise up in the education perspective. It's very easy for kids to type in a topic that then the AI can generate a good article without doing research, right? A lot of things the teacher asks them to do, they can just do it by clicking a button. And now there is also, if you search, in college, if you search things, a lot of answers and exam questions, the answers are just showing up. So this can, I can see like, people are concerned that there could be a lot of challenge in education. And not only in college, but also in middle school, elementary, not middle school, elementary school, but the high school as well. So how do each of you think about this kind of concern? Or do you have any plan and any thoughts?
So just to clarify your question, because I want to ensure that I'm answering your question. You're asking essentially what are thoughts and plans or just approach is towards AI? And how it just overnight is just emerging? And our children are faced with it and it's overtaking-
No, it's not about AI itself. It's more about the challenge AI is going to pose to the education.
Right. So this is something that the board is actually looking at very closely. And this is actually something that's within our purview because it covers policy, which is governance. And AI is expanding. And it's, we attribute it similarly to when the internet just first exploded, right? And it was before regulations were put around it. Because there's also safety with AI, right? Because they could, once you open the door to something, you also have to, you open up the door to AI. AI could stop up on many other arenas that are not regulated and can put our child, our children at risk. So right now, but we also have to be on top of it. We can't ignore it. And it also is a tool. So our children could also be left behind on many different things. Right now, actually, at our last board meeting, we approved into our professional development for our staff. And MIT is coming this summer, and I think in July. And they're holding a professional development with our staff since MIT's already done an in-depth research with it. And there's a committee in place currently comprised of parents and teachers and our administrative staff. And they're going to do an exploration. And we're very fortunate that our curriculum director, our superintendent curriculum and instruction, Dr. Chowsky, has done a deep dive years ago already. She's already at the peak of this and she's informed us. And they're on top of exploring all of this and in a manner that is abiding by all of the laws so that we can put our policies in place of programs to buy from the school through the Chromebooks that is monitored and is covered in the laws to protect our children in the same manner of teaching them how to responsibly use AI.
Thank you. Ms. O'Briance. Thank you. I'm really glad you asked that question. In my conversations I've had over the last few weeks, that question has come up a lot. And Nadia is right. I watched at the last board meeting was Dr. Chowsky and the board members agreeing to start shaping those policies and asking those questions. As a parent, I agree with you. This is the future that none of us have any grasp on what it will be capable of. I have seen with our own children, it's changing either the way they learn and study. I still, the research shows, and I really want to look at this, that comprehension and understanding from a paper book versus a screen is like, is much, much, much better. They don't absorb everything from a screen. But my kids are using AI to help them study. They'll talk to their phone and ask, you know, questions. Give me a factor, give me a practice problem. So it can be the tool, but it's also a powerful and dangerous tool that we don't all quite understand yet. So I love the fact that the board is being proactive and staying on top of this because this isn't going to go away and we need to be ahead of it. I also would love to see us as a community look to experts and other districts and how they're tackling it and approaching it. And I would like this to be part of a broader discussion around how technology does, how the kids learn from technology, interact from technology. And at the end of the day, is there a balance between the old-school, you know, pen and paper and how we can control and limit it? There's, you know, so many opportunities to learn from it. But at the end of the day, these are kids. And there's also studies that show, you know, their brain development is impacted by these screens and the addictive quality of the screen. So I think it's a topic that ours district and everyone needs to be paying very close attention to in the next few years. Okay, thank you. Ms. Woodson?
The universities and colleges, I'm currently a student pursuing my degree, finishing it up. But the universities and colleges are well-versed in this. They're using AI. But there are structures and things put in place within your app and your curriculum that protect you from plagiarism. And they know basically if you're reading and writing and if you're just using AI. So AI is coming. I just feel we need to make sure that we have all the measures in place, as my colleagues have said, to protect the children and just to make sure that they are using this and that they're using this in the best possible way and it's not taking away from old-school learning, right? Old-school learning is the best way to go. But we have to be aware that AI is coming. People are going to be using it when they go to college. AI is going to be allowed, they're going to be using it. So we better, really better off having them prepared for it, other than staying away from it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to clarify something. I think I was confusing. I'd like the time to go back to a minute and a half for each response. I didn't mean to keep you in two minutes, but whatever. Thank you. Does anyone have, I have a question for the board, but for the candidates.
Hi, my name's Susan Danden, and I have two kids, seventh grader and eighth grader. My daughter just started using a phone. So my question for our view is, how, if any chance that B O E can tackle the issue of phone addiction and the habit of kids these days just reduce to social media and wasting, and, you know, just wasting their precious time on those useless, silly, really silly videos? I just can't stand it. They can do it for 15 minutes and I think if I'm not supervising them and on that day, I should watch really silly videos for hours, I became angry about it.
So what is, is your question for the candidates?
Yeah, so like, what would you do, how would you do to tackle that problem of phone addiction?
And, sorry, this one goes to Ms. O'Briance, sir?
This one goes to Ms. O'Briance first. Nice to, it's nice to meet you, person. That's an excellent question too, and one that's come up the last few weeks. I don't know if many of you have heard, but Governor Hope will put in her state budget this year a cell phone ban statewide. So if I'm elected to the board, that's probably the first thing the administration and the board would work together on and implementing. And on the board, it's not a matter of our opinions, it's about implementing the rule. I know my kids are upset. Mom, how could you bring my sneakers when I forget my sneakers? But I read some, I read up on this issue. And then I believe there's about eight states, red and blue states, a mix, have tried this to great success. There's a transitional period, the first two weeks are a little rocky, the kids are upset about this. But they see kids flourish and the community flourish. And there's crazy stories about all these crazy things that the kids are discovering together because they don't have, you know, their phones. So I think as we look to that possibly being implemented in September, I would love to see the board and the administration be very proactive in educating the community about the details of that policy and preparing the students and getting parent input and student input on whatever pieces may or may not be flexible. So that we go into September, like, kind of pumped to see what this is going to do, you know, for our kids. There's a broader question around cell phone addiction in general. And that's a huge problem, a larger problem. These things are 100% addicting, except especially for young, impressionable little brains. And they are missing out. And we collectively, you know, have to figure that out. So, thank you, Susan. But the cell phone ban in school, I think it's a great start. Okay, Ms. Woodson?
The cell phone issue, it comes up a lot. I run a six-week summer camp program at the Menhasset Grand Night E O C. And we have banned cell phones this year. Cell phones will not be allowed. The children will not be allowed to have cell phones. If they come with them, we will be taking them away and giving them back at the end of the day. I feel, you know, children are just consumed with the phones. And like you said, these crazy stupid videos. And there's things that are not safe and without proper monitoring. I don't, I don't really know how to solve that. I think banning cell phones during school time will be a start. But us as parents, that's, you know, it's really going to start at home and us really putting our foot down and saying, you know, this is not allowed. This is not what we're going to tolerate. I mean, we can ban it in school, but if we're not monitoring what's going on at home, you know, it's going to have to start at home.
And we had to work together.
Yep.
Okay, Ms. Janabus?
I agree with all of your sentiments. And we knew that this was coming down the pipe from the governor. She had to get legislature approval in order to do so. And we weren't able to craft a policy around it because we needed to wait to see what we're be allowed to craft a policy around. And we just found out that it will be from bell to bell. And then they are allowing local schools to make a policy around it. And then there will have to be adjustments that we'll have to make in terms of, right now, the students can't, parents can't email student accounts. So we held a, Dr. Chowsky and Dr. Passy held a forum a few months ago with parents. And it was open to everybody and we discussed different thoughts. And they have notes from all of that. And I don't want to take credit away from Ted Post, the other board member. But about a year or two ago, he said, we have to do something about these cell phones. So it was on his mind before the governor made her statement. And I don't want to take away credit from him with that. But this is something that's been on all of our minds. And it made it much easier having it just be already written in a regulation at this point so that this way we could just craft a policy around it and just do what's best for the kids. But also find ways to support them so that things do happen where they need to contact their parents. And we also have to keep in mind that some of our students are juniors and seniors. So that was something that did come up in the forum. How can we tell junior and senior, you can't use your cell phone? So we will have to think about this thoughtfully and work with the community on that.
Great, thank you for that question. Oh, we have time for one or two more questions?
Hello, my name is Ben. This question is about academic rigor and mental health. So I believe the Princeton University principal recently reviewed that demanding academic rigor and maintaining good mental health are not necessarily at heart of each other. And I'm just wondering if you agree with that perspective from the K-12 context? And also, would that believe, how would you act on the board? How would that guide your actions on the board?
I'm sorry, the hypothesis is academic rigor and mental health are not in conflict or are in conflict?
Are not in conflict.
Or not in conflict? Oh, and that would be for Ms. Woodson first, sorry.
Can you repeat the question?
Yeah, so I'm wondering if you agree with the argument that demanding academic rigor and maintaining good mental health are not at odds with each other?
Are not at odds with each other?
I think, yeah.
I feel that mental health is very important as well as, you know, and academic rigor. It will have to, you know, we're going to have to really get together with the family and the community and really figure this out because with mental health, academic rigor can cause some of the mental health issues. If we're encouraging our children to, you know, hone in on home. I can see personally, my daughter, I would always be on her, on her about certain things and being successful. Manhasset is very competitive and getting into college and scholarships and all the same. I was driving her nuts. It got to a point where I just had to let her take her time and, you know, while being a parent, but also just trying to preserve the mental health issue with the whole situation. And not really drive her crazy just because of the competitive nature that is going on within the school system.
Thank you. Ms. Janopolis?
Absolutely. They are at odds with each other. And this is an ongoing conversation that the building is aware of and is actively and continuously working on. And it's an iterative process. It's definitely not something that anyone shines away from talking about or acknowledging. And just recently, we were told that they're looking for more spaces to have children, just have a place to go relax. So even the Wellness Center, they're, they're looking for more spaces to have more kids use it just as a place to relax or find other spaces. The teachers are very familiar with all of this. This is not a new issue in Manhasset, just as Ms. Woodson shared. And, and it's not a solvable issue either. It's, it's one that we need to keep our eye on. And something that the curriculum and Dr. Pasi did also is, and this isn't like a solution to it, but they look for different ways, this is just an example, they have, this year they apply two overrides for classes. So that's so that children don't have that stress of like, oh, I only have one override. And they're given another chance and that's just one example. There's so many examples that our administration, that our teachers, and also obviously there's the child, right? So like we have our counselors, we're, we're looking to add more staff to help the children. And, and this is something that's really important and it's at the forefront. During my board tenure, we added...
Time keys.
Oh, I have time. But this is something very important and it's a very good point. Thank you for bringing it up.
Okay, Ms. O'Brien-Silver, please.
I talked about this in my opening statement. I think one of the grand challenges for districts like ours who are highly competitive, we're sought after, we send our kids to the most amazing colleges and on athletic scholarships, all that stuff, is the why. And make sure we keep those high standards, keep as many APs as the kids want to go to. But do it with thought and purpose. So I would love to use that lens of when we work with our kids, you know, these kids, they will do whatever we ask of them. They will get to the bell at seven thirty and stay at school and stay for their sport or extracurricular. They'll come home from, for dinner, quickly eat and then start their homework and be up until twelve at night, one at night. And that doesn't mean it is right. So to have a lens where we are always making sure there's a reason behind all of these choices. The kids at the upper end especially, under tremendous pressure against these colleges. And I had a great conversation with a former board member actually about, why don't we do something simple as, you know, get the ninth graders and the parents in with kids who've gotten to college? And you could hear them talk about, I'm Matt Cornell, I wasn't in double accelerated. I found my passion. So I would love our schools and our teachers and our administrators to celebrate anything, the things that these kids find that like drive them and motivate them. And try to break free of this, this drive to, I have to get into college, I'm doing this to check these boxes. Because as adults, they are not going to live their fullest, what they're capable of. If they do that for now and find what really drives them, that's what's going to make them more successful. So I'd love this to be an issue that gone forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for sharing your perspective.
I think we have time for one more question. If we can limit the responses to sixty seconds, is that okay with everyone? Okay?
Hi, good evening. My name is Adrian Bolz and I am vice chair of Manhasset Grade and EOC. And we have quarterly meetings with members of administration as well as board members of Manhasset's school system. And on one recent, our last meeting as a matter of fact, we were speaking about the sports schedule and such. And I asked a question about sports night. I don't know, I'm dating myself, but, you know, we used to have that even from the elementary school. You became either on the orange team or you were on the blue team and that took you all the way through high school. And in intramural sports and such, there were competitions and then it culminated in sports night. And when we talk about diversity, equity and inclusion and even mental health, that it seems that that is something that could bring the children together. I don't know why it was, was stopped. And you don't, you have to only be a sports person. There were people making floats, there were people doing signs and this, that and the other. I don't know if anybody knows why it stopped, but is there any thought about it coming back?
We're only a little short on time. So wait, so what's the question?
Why would it stop? Is there any thought of it coming back?
Thank you. I'm glad we're going to be asked to do this again. Ms. Janopolis, this is, this question goes to you first.
Well, thank you for sharing that with me because I didn't even know it existed. So it sounds so lovely.
It was, it was great.
Yeah, so I would love to hear more and I would love to be part of it and our community to be part of it. So thank you for sharing that. Usually what I've seen in life is that there are active parents and then when their kids graduate, if there isn't a succession plan to pass the baton, then they die out. So that might have happened in this case. It happens sometimes with a lot of different things just in any club or event or whatever it is. But I really appreciate you sharing that. Of course, it sounds like, it doesn't sound like somebody has to be, you know, the top ten athletes to do present, more back community and, and finding a language through sports and play. So I'd love to see that.
Okay, thank you. Ms. O'Brien-Silver, sixty seconds?
Sure. Adrian, what that sounds to me like you're describing is like giving our students those opportunities to connect, to mix everybody up, to find those similarities and moments that they can celebrate each other. And I love the idea of bringing something like that back because when we all look back and remember our high school, it's those kind of core memories that you remember and stick out in our heads rather than the science test or, you know, the gym to mile with the gym. So I love that idea, you know, very much for this community.
Thank you. And Ms. Woodson?
I actually, I actually participated in that and it was a whole lot of fun. And we used to look forward to that, that experience and the teachers would get involved. So I think that that would be something that we should definitely explore and bring back and try to find out why it disappeared. But in either case, I think it's a great idea. Thank you for bringing that up, Adrian.
All right, thank you all for really excellent questions. It's time now to move on to closing statements. The candidates have two minutes each for closing statements. And, oh, before we take those closing statements, I would like to remind you all that Election Day is Tuesday, May twentieth. From seven AM to nine PM, voting will take place in the secondary school gymnasium. So again, the polls site is open from seven to nine on Tuesday. And a recording of this forum will be available on the L W V of the P W M YouTube channel within about forty-eight hours. So now to the closing statement. As each candidate concludes, please offer your applause for the willingness to serve and to answer your questions alongside the other candidates tonight. So, Ms. Woodson, you'll go first again.
I would first like to thank the Women League of Voters for hosting this event. It is such a great time of year where you get to come out and have a face-to-face with your candidates and get to know them on a personal level. So thank you, guys. I have all this stuff written here, but I'm just going to tell you that if you go out and you vote for me, you are going to get one hundred percent of me. For those of you that know me, I volunteer. All of my physicians that you've heard me talk about are volunteer physicians. I am very passionate about the children and the families of the Manhasset School District. I am one of them. I live it, I read it every day. And I just want that, that, for you guys to know that if you vote for me, every child, every voice, every family, everything that I stand for will be advocated on that BOE Board of Directors. We are not perfect. The school district is not perfect. I know we talk about excellence. You know, we want to strive to be perfect, even though we are not, we're going to fall short sometime. But at the end of the day, as long as we come together, we work together as a board and we will be able to get things done and move forward. Thank you for coming out and have a great evening and not to be exposed.
Ms. Janopolis, your closing statement, please. You have two minutes.
I am grateful for the opportunity to be reelected. The more we step up and serve and offer our talent and skills, it will only elevate the conversation and deliver excellence in education for all of our students. When I deliberated if it was time to pass the baton, I reflected on my time, all of the things I had learned, the new hires at all levels, that we are really lucky that have joined us, as well as reflecting on the existing Manhasset family comprised of teachers and staff that again, we're very lucky to have. And then I reflected on what part of my role was as a trustee, the dictionary term, or shall I say what AI says these days? And part of that role of governance is to provide strategic planning and setting a vision for school consistent with what the community's needs are. That being said, to fulfill that clause, there also needs to be consistency amongst board leadership to provide that foundation for our school leadership. And retaining some institutional knowledge to provide that consistency. Remaining on the board will help support sustainability in past knowledge and advance existing priorities. I would be grateful to continue to serve with the existing board. My experience, background and passion for helping students positions me well to be reelected and continue to represent you. It takes a culture of trust, teamwork and collaboration that has been built on the board and with the community to be successful to deliver on Manhasset excellence. Thank you.
And Ms. O'Brien-Silver, your closing statement, please.
Thank you again to the league and all of you who joined tonight in person and are watching online. This election is about our kids' futures. If you want someone who will be a fierce advocate for all of our students across the spectrum of needs and abilities, someone who will ensure our kids are empowered to achieve great things while building their confidence, fortitude and resilience, someone who will support excellence in academics and sports and extracurriculars while shining a light on our kids' wellbeing and mental health, then I am your candidate. This election is also about ensuring our district delivers on the nuts and bolts. If you want someone who has a proven set of professional strengths ready to be applied to service on the board, someone who will be an unwavering steward of our tax dollars, someone who will be a trusted collaborator with other board members, teachers and administrators, and someone who will joyously support and celebrate our hardworking teachers who put their hearts and souls into our kids every day, someone who will foster connections with the community and find consensus on a path forward, and someone who will serve with kindness and empathy and a dogged commitment to Manhasset, I am your candidate. I want to serve on the board to help our district deliver an education for our kids that holds their hands tightly as they nervously walk into kindergarten and launches them confidently into the world at graduation. I am running because your, your kids are amazing. The hard work that they put in every day, each on their own journey of growing up, inspires me. I watched them practically dazzle their parents with their math prowess in the Hop Into Math event a few weeks ago. I was brought to tears when the greasers said goodbye to their dying friend in the high school production of The Outsiders. And I was motivated to pick up my speed just a little bit when I run after learning of the accolades earned by our very fast track team. Your kids inspired me to run and together we can achieve so much great, so many great things. And I ask for your support and your vote to elect me to Manhasset's board of education this Tuesday, May twentieth. Thank you very much.
I'd like to thank all three candidates. We appreciate your willingness to answer questions from voters thoughtfully and candidly and in civil discourse with the challengers. And we salute your commitment to serving your fellow citizens by running to serve in this office. So thank you. And thank you all for all of you in the audience. Thank you for your thoughtful questions and for spending the evening educating yourselves about all the candidates and for your engagement in democracy. And voters like you keep our democracy thriving. With the form of the campaign, everyone get home safe and enjoy.